Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are going to have an open study session, and this will involve the water rate reduction.
May I suggest maybe just so that at least the audience can know too, maybe if Martin can give us abbreviation of his email to us?
Yes, that would be great.
So that's where the audience can understand what's going on.
Are we, so first of all, I wanted to check which email, is that the email from a couple, like late last week?
This would be this one right here. This would be September 5th, Thursday, September 5th, the one where you gave the three different scenarios?
Correct. So I think that day or a day earlier, the controller asked me to provide basically analysis of what is going to happen depending on the rates, if the rates were going to decrease by 10%. And I know that there was some questions to whether the rates are going to decrease for water only, for water and sewer. What I ended up doing is updating the agreed-upon procedures template from last year, assuming the expenditures and everything were kind of static based on those templates, looking at some of the increases that are pushed down from the county, from the state, from just a lot of different sources. And what I did is, so the original agreed-upon procedures called for a 5.3% roughly increase in water and sewer rates, that's a blended rate overall, and that would have taken effect in 2018. So I didn't update the dates or anything like that, but still the time period is the same, the five-year window. We are looking at 10% water decrease only, not sewer. And even if you're saying 10% decrease the first year and then subsequent years, you're going to increase it by 5% per year, within about four years, the water and sewer fund will run out of cash and actually be in a negative cash position. So you would not be able to meet your obligations for operations and maintenance, payroll, debt, et cetera. If the water and sewer rates were going to decrease by 10% in the first year and then subsequent years, you were going to go up 5%, just like the model called for, it would take you two years to run out of cash in water and sewer fund, from the point of the implementation of the 10% decrease. Now, I know it seems like, how's that even possible? 10%? How can we go insolvent within two-year period or a four-year period? The issue is, is that in order to run the water and sewer fund, you need approximately $6 to $6.5 million at any point in time in order to do it successfully. The reason for that is, you need, for any business, including water and sewer fund, which technically is a business, you are supposed to have so much cash on hand to meet payroll and operations and maintenance. Usually that is recommended to have a 90-day period of so much cash. If you do 90 days of cash, based on your expenditures in any given point in time during that whole year, 90 days of cash translates to about $4 million. That's based on your budget of about $16, $18 million of expenditures during the year. So that's $4 million they need just to keep the doors open, the lights on. In addition, you do have a very old system in the city of Dearborn Heights. Therefore, you should have some kind of a capital reserve in order to provide repairs and maintenance that are needed, especially during emergency points in time. That is usually calculated based on your net book value of your assets. The net book value, it's essentially the original cost minus depreciation, and usually there is a recommendation of a certain percentage for that. The model calls for about 2.25% of your net book value, which translates to about $2.5 million. So we're not talking about a significant amount of cash for the emergency repairs, but still adds up. So between the two, you need about $6 to $6.5 million of cash to run the water and sewer department. Now, in order to kind of, the other thing too that I put in the email, and I wanted to kind of just explain how in the world can this happen so fast, a decrease in cash by 10% decrease? So the model originally called for a 5% increase in the first year versus a 10% decrease. Technically, it's a 15% decrease from what the model calls, the 5% increase that was proposed versus a 10% decrease. 15% of your revenues, you have about $20 million in water and sewer revenues that come in, that receipts. So $20 million times 15% is about $3 million. So if you decrease the water and sewer rates by 10%, or by 10%, effectively lowering the model by 15%, that translates to $3 million a year, that you're quote-unquote burning through cash by not increasing the rates. So what ends up happening is that $6 million, $6.5 million reserve that is needed, ends up being depleted by $3 million a year if you decrease both water and sewer rates. Now, if you decrease only for water rates versus water and sewer, that bleeding out of the cash slows down by about half. So instead of that 15% times $20 million, it's actually 15% times roughly half, because only half of the revenue is water. That means you're bleeding out about $1.5 million per year in cash. So what ends up happening is it takes you about four years to run out of cash in the water and sewer fund. There are other measures you can do. You have to look at your expenditures and see if there's any flexibility and, you know, if you cut some expenses, things like that. The model that was presented last year, I believe on the very last page, shows the water and sewer rates, what the fixed costs are versus variable costs. Specifically, if we look at your fixed costs for the year ended 2018, so kind of the last audited timetable, if you add up payroll, operations and maintenance that are not flexible just from the perspective that you need to, you know, keep the lights on per se, annual debt payments, which are pretty significant, essentially about 82% of your costs in the water and sewer fund are static. So you can't really control those because they're outside of your control. The other 18% or so, you can probably control to some extent, so you could probably see where you can reduce some spending, et cetera. So basically, the email at the end, I would recommend to the city to revisit the model, update the model for the next five years, just to see where you will end up with cash before making any reductions. And the reason primarily is that if you make that reduction, it's extremely hard to recover because if you make that reduction in one year and then start doing 5%, you're losing that base, sort of, that $3 million that I talked about earlier. And instead of a 5% increase next year, or two years from now, when you're out of cash, you will probably be looking at potentially issuing bonds, asking for a millage of some sort, or increasing the water and sewer rates by significant percentage. So we're not talking about 5%, 10%, 15%. I was playing around with the model just a little bit with the agreed-upon procedures, just to see what the percentage is, and I went up to about 30% water increase, water and sewer rate increase in the first year, that didn't even do it. So it takes a long time to recover by the fact that you're coming down $3 million per year in that cash balance that you need.
Councilor?
Councilman Muscat.
You mentioned about salaries. Now, everybody in DPW can't possibly be being paid out of strictly water. What considerations have you taken of these people getting paid from highway and everything like that and not all from water?
So there's a schedule to an agreed-upon procedures that shows the salaries and wages and the projections and the staffing, based on the position, and those are paid by water. It's on page 13 of the agreed-upon procedures. It shows the salaries, it shows the number of positions, and it shows the total expense.
Page 13?
Page 13, yes. It's a, the page number is on the bottom left.
Now, all of these people work strictly in water. They don't, they don't go anyplace else. See, this is the problem I have with when we pay people. Some of these people will go out and do street sweeping maybe one day, or cutting grass another day. So their total salary comes out of water. We've got to break that down a little bit better for me.
So the way most cities operate, from the perspective of there's any use of water and sewer employees by the general fund, let's just say, or police, or whomever it might be, streets. And same thing if the general fund employees are used for the purpose of, you know, billing, for example. There's an analysis that's done by all communities, and then the water and sewer department has to reimburse, or vice versa, the expense because it's extremely difficult for people to have two different timesheets, two different systems completely, but it's easier to take a look at someone's schedule and say, okay, you worked a full week.
Have we done that?
That has been done by the city.
And have you seen it and have you checked it when you do your audit?
So we have looked at the allocations. So a few years ago, we had the recommendation of having the allocation updated, because the allocation wasn't updated for quite some time. The allocation was updated at ballpark three, four years ago. We did look at it, it looked reasonable, but we do recommend the city to go through that step again. I would actually encourage the city to go through that step probably every single year in updating it, because those percentages can change and shift.
Absolutely.
And John Selmy's been directed to do that, so John's going to make the allocation.
See, this is the problem I've had over years and years of, I don't know what the water department spends, and who gets it, and where it goes. We've bought trucks for directors out of the water fund. This is, and we keep raising the water rates to rob Peter to pay Paul, or however you want to say it.
The biggest concern, I guess, the biggest items that are driving the rates, it's not the, you know, a truck or something like that. I'm not saying that that's not a significant item.
$30,000 is $30,000.
No, I completely understand.
Okay.
But in the grand scheme of things, when, so we did test the allocation, or the reimbursements last year, I don't know if you recall in the audit.
Yes, we asked for them.
And we found that there were some late reimbursements because of a person being on leave and not being able to do the analysis. So far, so the audit hasn't been finalized or anything like that, so far, based on what we've seen, allocations have come in timely, et cetera. But the biggest driving thing, factor of the water and sewer rates, it's not your salaries, it's the debt payments, it's the cost of sewage disposals, it's the cost of water that the city has to pay other third parties in order to have them bring that into the city. In order to do that, you're, basically your hands are tied with the cost. Some of those costs are going up only 3%, 4%, 5% only, quote-unquote. Some of them are going up more, some of them are going by double digits. So having a, and that's why if you look at what the city has done historically, you have had increases almost every year in water and sewer rates, but you've also had increases in the expenses that you can't control every single year. And by decreasing the revenue, the top line, the expenses are not going to change, at least around 80% of those expenses are not going to change. So sooner or later, if the top line shrinks, you have to use up your fund balance, your cash. And if your cash is used up, it's, you're not going to be able to do the repairs. I know the city has been talking about potentially water meter replacement, that's a significant expense as well in the future. There's a lot of significant expenses that are coming up that personally I would recommend having a study done, updating the study, taking a look at it, seeing what the numbers are, and honestly, kind of sitting down and hashing out the budget and see, okay, where can we cut some of these expenses? What can we do to sharpen the pencil so that way these expenses do not have to occur? Or maybe, you know, some of these things, you know, if we have a truck, can it last for another three years? Can we, you know, replace a couple of things? And instead of buying a new truck in 2020, can we wait till 2023? See what happens if we can delay some of these expenses? And then perhaps at that point, look at it and say, you know what, the water and sewer rate could be reduced, or maybe could be not increased by as much of a, you know, maybe not the 5%, maybe it's only 3%. There could be some things of doing to make sure that you plan. And I would recommend doing five-year plan. One-year plan is never going to really, as you know, one year flies by pretty quick. A friend of mine always says, like, days are long, years are short. It's extremely true. I mean, it just flies by like that. And looking at a one-year plan for capital outlay, it's not going to paint a true picture of what the city needs. If you do a five-year plan, you're going to be more in the ballpark. I've even seen 10-year plans, which at that point, it gets really gray, and who knows what's going to happen 10 years from now. Five-year plan, in my opinion, is very reasonable, and you're definitely doing the right thing for the city in order to do that.
Councilman Nadella?
So this, in regards to that plan, are you talking about the city itself doing it? Are you talking about a third party such as yourselves?
No, so the, essentially the agreed-upon procedures are the plans. So what happens with the agreed-upon procedures, we obtain data from the city and from other third parties. By third parties, again, kind of talking about the county and other reports from, okay, what are the water and sewer rates expected to be, or water and sewer charges expected to be that are passed down to the city? What are the debt obligations that are passed down to the city? And basically what happens is, those numbers populate the model, and then the city comes up with a plan of capital outlay, a strategic plan. See, how much money do you need for the next five years to make improvements in the water and sewer fund? Whether it's water meters, whether it's lining of the drains, whether it's, you know, repairs of water mains, et cetera. And again, the water and sewer system is very, very old. The city is an older city, very established city. Therefore, you do need to go through a significant number of repairs each year, a lot more than a lot of these, a lot of communities that maybe are a little bit more on the outskirts of the Wayne County.
So I had some questions in regards to your cash available chart, this would be, this one that you sent in the email, they had the highlights on it. First of all, okay, you said you needed 90 days of operating expenses, made sense. And then you said emergency replacement, that was the $4 million, and then emergency replacement, another $2.1 million. But then there's another cost, again, of $500,000. What is, I mean, it says your other reserve, but that's pretty vague.
Yeah, it was other reserves. To be honest, the city elected to do that a few years ago, it was just for other unexpected expenses that might come up.
I can tell you what that actually is. The city has a propensity towards flooding, and that reserve is specifically for floods mainly in the south end, but can also be used for the north end floods.
But with due respect though, Mr. Mayor, I mean, I know no money's been used that I know of at least.
Oh, no, we, we.
So are we using $500,000?
Not every.
I forbid it doesn't happen again, but per flood?
Not every year, but when, for instance, like earlier this year, we were hoping for reimbursement for the, from the federal government. We pretty much used quite a bit of that $500,000 plus, and I don't want to get into public, but, you know, we get claims, so that comes up when the attorneys come before us with the claims. So that's part of that also.
But we already have emergency replacement money of $2.1 million, and then we already have the other 90 days of expenses, which is $4 million. I mean, it seems like a lot of money to be held on to. And then in addition to that, I know a lot of times, either in our budgets or different council packets, we have different money that's going right out of water, which obviously, at the very minimal, implies that there's some extra money laying around. So with that being the case, between that, and having an extra half million here just sitting around, I don't agree with, honestly. And then plus another six, I mean, I, it just doesn't make sense. It seems like that's something, if you want to do some quick cost cutting, that'd be something that definitely can be cut. And then when we need it, it could always be borrowed out of the general fund and maybe reimbursed back to water.
Now, general fund does not have, in my opinion, you do the audit, but the general fund is the one that we have the tightest situation with. You would not have, the general fund does not have, it's hard to get $100,000 out of the general fund, let alone a half a million.
Well, we got $1.8 million for the golf course. That was not a general fund, it was actual, the general, like, not anymore.
That came out of fund balance.
Fund balance.
Concern, and I mean, these are judgmental decisions. I'm anticipating that the economy is going to dip. I'm very concerned about lancing, some of the plans that are coming out would reduce our state shared revenue. In a way, it would transfer it to road funds, but ultimately, we rely on state shared revenues. It's a judgment call on the reserves. I'll be the first one to admit to it. We've actually had reserves higher than half a million, we lowered to half a million. We can't buy any insurance for flooding. Lynda, do you have any idea how much we spent on flooding earlier in the year? Was it $300,000?
It was somewhere around there, and I don't know if that's even including some of the overtime from other.
So you take that coupled with the claims that we see periodically, I don't want to say the amount.
Right, right.
And we are starting to approach to half a million.
But here's the issue, you have a flood in two, the last flood previous to this last year was in 2014. You had none in four years, and I know nobody can predict the future, at least I can't. But in those four years, if you're taking half a million per year, there's $2 million right there.
Oh, if I can just interject something. So the reserve, the total target reserve is the $500,000, it's a target five years from now. So your goal is to have this $6.6 million in five years in the fund, making sure that you have that safety net.
So are you saying the reserve is over five years at $100,000 per year, or what are you specifically saying?
No, so that's your bogey, that's how much you want to have in your savings account, quote-unquote, to run the water and sewer department.
Six years from now. It's not a half a million every year.
So this model, if you look line by, line item by line item, at the end of 2018, you had about $8.2 million of cash. Then, in, at the end of 19, you're down to $5 million because expenditures exceeded revenues. And then following your 4.4, 4.7, until you're, you're trying to build up to that bogey at the end of five years. So based on that, the $500,000 isn't, you're not looking at like per year of savings, it's more your target bone, your target goal would not, it would be $500,000 less if you wanted to eliminate that $500,000 reserve. And that's of course up to the city to determine what expenses you want to budget for and approve, and then also what target reserves you'd like to have in the water and sewer fund. So if you decide at the end of the day that maybe, you know, 2.25% of your net book value, maybe that's a little low, or that's a little high, or maybe that feels right, the $2 million. Okay, we'll leave, you know, the city leaves that. Maybe that $500,000 extra reserve, maybe that's not needed, so you eliminate that. So maybe you're down to $6 million reserve. That of course is going to have an impact on your water and sewer rates, that you're not going to have to increase by maybe 5.3%, maybe it's only going to go up by 5% per year.
So last question if you mind, Councilor.
So those are the kind of things that you can look at and expenses to look at the model and see what happens down the road.
So let's take a hypothetical year, your average year. You have an emergency replacement here, $2.1 million. Is that per year or is that over a five-year period, the emergency replacement?
The $2.1.
$2.104, $711.
That's in total that you want to have at any point in time in your bank account in case something happens.
It stays there.
It stays, that's your goal to have that.
So hypothetically, there was no emergencies, that $2.1 million that's there, if it was there today.
That $2.1 million would stay there five years.
Stay there, we would add nothing to it.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Correct. It's kind of like if you had your own personal savings account, and you always said, you know, I want to have $500,000 for retirement. Your goal is that in, let's just say, 10 years. It's not like you're spending it or anything like that, that's your target bogey in order to make sure that you're comfortable at the time you retire.
Have we ever had a year where we didn't have an emergency?
No. That's why that number got in it. I will tell you, I recommended that that reserve be put in when we lost all insurance coverage, because there was no way to pay. And you rack up the costs when we have the floods. Tom saw it firsthand in his neighborhood. You got to have some money around for the extra garbage pickup and all the other things that are associated with these flooding and, and the cost. I mean, because that was there, I was able to call GFI and say.
GFL.
GFL, yeah. We want extra pickups, and that's what that account is.
But it's still a lot of money, though.
I'm telling you.
I mean, between the $2 million for emergency and the $500,000 for reserve, you're talking about $2.5 million, and if your targeted reserve is 6.6, I mean, you're talking about 40%.
It seems like a lot, unfortunately, so the city, it is a big city, and your budget overall, you have about $20 million budget in this fund. So technically, it's actually not that big of a number. To me personally, it seems like a huge number. If I was looking at that in my personal savings account, which would be great to have.
Right, but for the city.
However, if we're looking at a big city with these kind of operations, the water and sewer fund, $2 million can go through like that. You have a huge flood, you have water mains that break, et cetera, that can go and be spent in a month or two months, if, pun intended, if perfect storm hits.
The $2.1 million, am I correct, is basically what we use to fix the sewer breaks, water main breaks and things of that nature. Now, the $500,000 is for the other costs related to flooding, picking up.
Money, yes.
Trash, whatever, God, overtime that's got to be paid to people. That I understand now. So there's two separate, two separate things there, $2.1 million for the repair of things, and the $500,000 is there to pay off, pay out the contingency fees for all of that.
Well, where I'm going with this is if we're looking to cut costs, I mean, I mean, everybody wants a little extra money on the side, and I get that. But I mean, if there's a place to cut costs based on what I'm looking at, that'd be probably one of the first places I would personally start.
And that's why I say, like, the council should look at this model and say, okay, this is what you're comfortable with, this is what you're not comfortable with, and make adjustments to get to the right spot. I absolutely agree. The other thing that I didn't point out too is, the city is in a unique situation from the perspective, if you compare yourself to a growing community, you don't have the tap fees that a lot of communities have. So there's a lot of communities out there that receive millions of dollars, maybe a million or two every year. So they don't really need that capital reserve like the city of Dearborn Heights does, because you're limited to that. You're.
Well, we're starting to have more new construction now, but not a lot.
There is, but it's not going to be millions of dollars, unfortunately. So it becomes a problem overall, and again, with the aging system, you're going to have repairs every year. If this $2.1 million and the $500,000 feels a little high, it can definitely be adjusted in the model.
Okay. Chairman Chair.
Councilman Carson?
How much has the Great Lakes Water Authority increased their rates from last year? And then do you know what the surrounding communities are doing as far as their rates?
So I don't recall what this most recent increase was, I believe the year before it was 4%?
It's staying in that range. And the other thing, if you recall, with, the communities bought the system from the county for the Down River, and that froze the rates. So the rates are coming in at the expected level. So we froze, really, those two have been somewhat frozen, we have the contract with Great Lakes Water. What's happening now is the Rouge disposal has been ordered by Eagle, which is the environment Great Lakes, I forget what the last thing, environment, I guess, is mandating all these fixes, and we've been told that the, to expect a 20% to 28% increase in the rates for that middle Rouge. And that's the one that, I don't know how to control that.
Yeah, I know that's not built into the model yet. So there's a lot of expenses that are forthcoming in the future that are going to be completely outside the city's hands, you're not going to be able to control many of those. But I do believe there are some that you can take a look at here, and like I said, sharpen the pencil, see what you can do in order to make the decision of where the rates need to be.
Okay, Councilman Wilson, Councilman Carson, continue.
What is our share, if any, for the DUA for the Down River system? Is that, where does that money come from? That's already built into the model, but what it comes is that all these disposal rates are based upon the amount of water consumption, because there's, there's no meter specifically. So what they do is they look, we look at the amount of water that's purchased in basically the south end of Dearborn Heights, south of Dartmouth, and that becomes the generator of the revenue, except for, the other thing is like Martin pointed out, that there's a fixed cost and a variable cost, the same way with all these other systems, is the plant has had to put in all kinds of corrective action as a result of DEQ, Eagle requirements. So there is a fixed cost associated with that system that's going to be in there for years to come. A lot of it is SFR funding, if you're familiar with SFR. It's a state means of financing at a low interest rate, but those bonds have to be paid off. So, but what we did is, with the Great Lakes Water Authority and all the work that was done on that particular thing, the rates are pretty much controllable, and we did the same thing with DUA. So those rates, I do not expect any significant increase. The thing that came out of the blue was, for three years, we received no rate increase from city Detroit, Wayne County, oh, I think we, I can't say about Detroit, but Wayne County for three years. Now, all of a sudden, now the county is looking at that and has been told that they got to clean up the Rouge, and so there's major projects, and that's what's going to generate this 28%, which is, our body is sitting together, has to decide between that, the three CSO basins in the strip area, as to how we're going to manage that. We do have some money from the over billing on one of, on the previous debt issue, and that can be used towards the debt, and that Martin works into his model, but there still is considerable. But there's still is considerable amount of millions of dollars. So we have to decide, are we going to put it through the water rates because these are mandated? Or are we going to go to the public and say, would you want it on your tax bill? Maybe it'd be deductible for you. But one, in some way, shape, or fashion, the bill's going to come, and we're not going to be able to say, no, we don't want to pay it.
That's our buy-in, in other words, and then some.
Yeah, and these are, John will be able, next time he's here, or Vaughn, who is the new, Dan Brooks. I have gone to some of those early meetings with the county, and what, what really caused an additional problem is, I'm going to use an acronym and maybe all of you won't know, but there's a group called Yucca. And what it basically is, is that Canton, Northville, Plymouth, Plymouth Township, I think, and there was one other, some of those smaller communities, decided they did not want to be in the Rouge system. So they transferred and were allowed to join, it's the Ypsilanti, something else.
Still the...
Yeah. So that's the Yucca group. The problem with that is, the original cost, when I went to the first meetings, included Plymouth, Canton, and Canton's a big place, and these other communities. Now that they've said, no, we take our flow to the west, we don't want to, we don't feel we have to do anything in regards to this plan, then left Dearborn Heights, Redford, Livonia, Garden City, Westland, Wayne. And we're stuck now because it's, it's, the costs are being spread amongst fewer communities, and that's going to make our increase higher. Correct?
Yes.
Do you know what the numbers are or our percentage?
So I don't know the numbers at this time. I have, I have not had opportunity to attend the meeting since Dan has, has left. But I'll be at the, my intention is to be at the next one and be able to respond to these kinds of comments. So if you have a specific question, I'm happy to get the answer for you. I just don't know all of them right now.
And the answer may not be there yet because the, there's still discussion with Wayne County and Eagle as to whether or not, what the project should be finalized. Because the first cost was like, I'm, I'm pretty close, $90 million. And then they said, no, you need to build basins, retention basins. So then it went, the last number I saw was $127 million. So it may be higher. I don't think it's going to go lower. But that's a lot of money.
But that's for all the communities, correct?
That would be all the communities, but over 30 years, I mean, it's, that could be $4 million. And our portion, it's all based upon how much wastewater you're putting in the system is how it's going to be figured.
How do you figure wastewater? It's just on your...
Pro-rata.
On how much you use, how much water you use, correct?
Yeah.
So the more people you have is obviously going to generate more money that you have to pay out.
Yes.
So the larger city pays more money.
Yes.
Which to me is not fair. Well, I mean, it's fair, I shouldn't say it's not fair, but everybody should have an equal amount.
Councilman Wenzel?
Yeah. We're talking about the tap fees. When we, when that little strip mall was built and there's five stores in there, is that just one tap fee or each one's paid individually?
No. A tap fee for a shopping center will normally be to the shopping center and then prorated to the tenants. That's how most of them work. In a, in a newer community like Canton, where you get a brand-new subdivision and you get like 200 new homes, it's not uncommon for these communities to the west of us to charge $5, $7,000 a tap-in. So each home upon construction is paying $7,000 per home that's going right into the water fund. The same thing was done in Dearborn Heights in the early '60s when we first formed. In fact, I was told, the water rates are very low in Dearborn Heights simply because they were able to operate the entire system on tap-in fees. But then once all the homes and the businesses were pretty much built, but you have to have, even at five, we don't charge that amount. I think we're at, does anybody know, I think we're at like $2,000 or something. We've never, we kind of, because we don't have a big subdivision coming in, so we have not really increased those fees. But I, I heard from a friend of mine in Canton, they paid $5,000 to $7,000 for a tap-in.
I heard that they, you know, there's some cities that do charge separate tap fees for those, for strip malls, shopping centers.
And, you know, one thing to add to that is, you could revisit that as well and see, okay, what the rates should be for tap-in fees if you wanted to make some adjustments and, again, update the model, something to that effect.
Yeah, you mentioned, you know, putting off purchases for a couple of years, that just avoiding the inevitable anyway, you know, like, but, you know, there's, I know there's things that we have no control over. I'd like to see what, you know, what we pay that we have no control over, and some things that, do some things go down? Some charges to the city? I mean, you mentioned that some things go up, some go down. What would typically...
It could. I mean, I know the big factor that has gone down over the last few years, you were able to pace down some of the debt that was outstanding years past. So some of the principal interest has decreased over the years. But unfortunately, most expenses for the city have increased, primarily the ones that are outside of your control, you know, paying to the city of Detroit and the Great Lakes Water Authority, et cetera. Like, a lot of those expenses, you get the bill and you, there's a little argument you can have.
Great, thanks.
Let's make sure, Lisa, did you have any questions?
So, Mr. Mayor, I hate to put you on the spot.
Mr. Fazey, did you have any questions?
No.
Okay, go ahead then, again.
So I hate to put you on the spot, but if anybody knows of a way to bring down these rates, you probably do, haven't been here for, we're not going to say how many years, but many years, obviously, and as an accountant, and then you run, obviously, all these different departments, there's got to be a way that we could cut these rates by 10%. If we cut them by 10%, and I know it's a lot, and I know exactly what you're saying, Martin, and I, and I get it. But if you're suggesting we go in the expense route, then that's something more really on, you know, on your department, has to sit on you and the department has to figure out ways that we can bring these rates down because, actually, even in, in my field of business, I mean, I'm here on a regular basis, customers complaining after they purchase homes, saying that the water bills are too high. Is there ways, as we speak today, that you think you can decrease these rates?
Well, I probably have, I don't tend to, I think, do an effective job of marketing, but one of the biggest things we did is the fact that we were under a mandate in Redford Township, Dearborn Heights, and Detroit was under a mandate to put in a significant, to eliminate all the combined sewers and to do so about eight years ago. Now, one of the things that I did and is, I took all these projects and I mapped them out as to the start for engineering and construction and then the mortgage. And what I attempted to do and have done somewhat successfully is try to time these projects so that some debt would fall off before new debt came in. Give you a good example, is the city of Inkster 10 years ago eliminated all their combined sewers. They came to us, and in fact, Dearborn was doing the same project, and they, both communities came to me, and they said, would you like to join us and do the project? Well, the problem is, there was these other bonds, and that would have really increased. So I told them, no. And the idea was that, I still don't know where Inkster got all their money, but if you recall, about four years ago, their water rates like tripled or quadrupled. That's why it happened. And I said, no, we're not going to do it because it would have had the significant effect. So the big thing that I've tried to do, because the 80% number, that's the one I've been keying in on because that's, that's the, that's the huge elephant that you've got to control. So we tried to hold some of these projects off. So what we did is, in the north end, we went ahead with Redford Township, Redford, Dearborn Heights, went with Detroit, and, and we still, you see bills on that there's a portion of construction costs we're paying off every month. But here's what happened. They were going to do that project. It was going to be multimillion dollars. And we went up to Lansing and Redford Township and Dearborn Heights because the states, Detroit said, well, we're under a bankruptcy, we can't do it. So we want a extension under a state law that allows for cities that are in dire financial constraint. Redford Township and Dearborn Heights could not argue the exact issue, but we did anyway, and we won. The staff was mad, but in fact, Dan Brooks was an important element in that, is that we argued that we needed a regional solution, not just one. So the state gave us additional time. So we held that project off. But I can't hold off anymore. I've held off for 10 years, the three projects and the CSOs in the strip area, we're going to have to do that. But that's been the big thing, is trying to hold these things off. And then I will become more involved with the Wayne County and issue with Eagle. I've already talked to some of the people in Livonia who have been the strongest people in trying to control that, and also Westland. So that's where I've been emphasizing my cost or my time and my effort because those are the big ones in my estimation. Now, I'm not looking at the smaller stuff. In fact, we've met, but the big key that I think we did is when I found John Sellme to be the director, John was up in Redford, and John is looking at how we operate. And the first thing I told him was, I said, there's no sacred cows. If you can find a more efficient way and a better way to operate, do it. You have my permission. I, I feel very comfortable that John, because he's coming to me every week, and he says, Mayor, I'm doing this, I'm doing that, is that he's trying to find it. John would be, I think, our element to look at the other 20% and see where we can save. And he's not, he couldn't make it today, but that's who I rely on that. And then I do my lobbying and everything else with the bigger projects. But while I've delayed these now for over 10 years, I don't know that I can, I know I can't delay the CSO.
Can we put a timeline for that 20%? Or potential 20%?
I, I've already asked, I want John to make the efficiencies as soon as he finds it. I'm not, we're not waiting for the study. I mean, every single day, and John finds things. The one really positive thing, since he worked for a long time in Redford and worked in Southfield, is that he has the benefit, in the same way that an auditor, when he sees different accounting system, he picks up the, almost like the best way to do something, best practices. So John has come back and said, hey, I think we could do this better, this, this better, and this better. I know he's made a lot of changes in the overtime situation, and, and so he can speak on it himself, but I would hope that, that's the guy I would rely on for that. On the reserves, I'm going to tell you, it's a judgmental call. And, and, you know, I would not make it too skimpy because we might have a problem if we have a disaster. I mean, but that's judgmental. But do I think you're going to find, Martin's the only one that probably said, I don't know that there's sufficient enough savings through either one of those two things to get to a 10% reduction, but that's my judgmental opinion.
If I can add, so earlier in the discussion, we talked about 80% of your expenses roughly is fixed, are fixed. If you're looking at a $20 million budget, just using round numbers, so 80% of that is $16 million you can't really change. The other $4 million, technically, you, you have a little bit more say to it, you can cut some expenses, capital outlay, et cetera. You're not going to cut them to zero, unfortunately. If you did a 10% decrease before, when we talked about, it translates to about $3 million a year. You're not going to be able to cut down those, that $4 million to $1 million. But you can cut it down to something, very likely. So are you looking at a 10% water and sewer decrease? Probably not. But are you looking at necessarily the 5% increase? Is that necessarily needed? It's hard to say until you really go through this and sharpen your pencil and so on. The city has not had a water and sewer rate increase the last year. So technically, this model from last year that's showing the 5% increase is outdated and so on. However, looking through this again, kind of updating it for the next five years, I think could paint the picture, and then, you know, you can make adjustments to the reserves, you can make adjustments to certain expenses, seeing if, you know, suppositions could be part-time versus full-time, maybe delaying some of the, like I said, the repairs, things like that. Maybe that will shift some of those expenses and reduce that 5% increase to maybe zero again. Maybe a slight decrease.
At this point, we have one last question from Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, then we'll open it up to the public.
Thank you. I meant, really, just to summarize from everything that's being said, and I think you just did it, by the way, the action steps. We need to review the allocation annually of the salaries, is something we can do. Water versus DPW, we need to review the tap fees. Have a five-year plan to review debt obligation, update the study, and review, review expenses, and review the model. And I would like to see us have a strategic plan for capital outlay and have Director Sellme here, because he sounds, he sounds like a key player in this.
Absolutely.
So I think that's the direction we should go.
Okay, thank you. At this point, I'm going to open it up to public comment. If anybody has some thing to say, please step up to the microphone.
Counselor Chair, I just have one comment. Had we done this five years ago, what John Sellme wanted to do, when everybody was complaining about the water rates and money being spent, we'd be way ahead today, but nobody listened. Nobody listened to the, to the people paying the bills. This is a problem. It's a problem with governments, and I'm not just saying this, Dearborn Heights, it's throughout the whole country. Nobody listens to the people paying the bills. That's just my, my take on it.
Okay, at this point, that concludes our open study session. We will reach out for 15 minutes.
Oh, there's no public comments.
No comments?
Nobody came up. Nobody came up and made one last comment?
Okay, you're right. Okay, you're right.[402.81]